Welcome, everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950. Series Resolution Number 202201 and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. While this meeting will be physically open to the COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via application Zoom. Zoom information was posted on the agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the city. For the city council meetings by emailing the city clerk and the city clerk at CISeries.ca, US by 5:00 PM the day of this meeting. The clerk may read the written comments into the period, into the record. If specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email, your written comment will be distributed to the city council and kept on file as part of the official record of the council meeting. If you have any questions on how to attend virtually or encountering difficulties connecting to this meeting, please contact the city clerk at 209-646-4812 or by emailing city clerk. And welcome everybody to a special city council meeting today, Saturday, February 5th. Can we please call the roll call?
Councilmember Casey.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. Everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So today, we will, today, we have a public hearing. Members of the public interested in addressing the city council during this special meeting may comment during the consideration of the item that has been distributed in special in this special meeting agenda in accordance with Government Code Section 5494. We will be, we'll be accepting comments regarding this public hearing items during the hearing. Moving on to public hearing today, the hearing is, do we have the city attorney here?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have the consultants online too or no?
Yes, consultants here for Doug Yocum, and he's approaching the podium as we speak.
Okay, sounds good. I believe we do have a presentation. And after the presentation, we'll open this to the public.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doug Yocum. I'm with National Demographics Corporation. We're about to begin our third redistricting hearing. And this is the hearing where we will be looking at some draft maps. And the objective of today's meeting slash hearing is to hear from the public and from the council what they think of these draft maps that I've, I've put together and have been posted for the last seven days on the city's website. And then we will, the council will discuss them and hopefully indicate to me either their acceptance of one of these maps or the revisions that need to be made to one of these maps to make it into the final map, which we will adopt at your, at the next hearing. If you will advance my slide just, just a little bit, there we go, one more. I'm sorry. Let's see, we are, I'm sorry, go back. Page three, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. No, 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 one more. Back, back. All right, we are at February 5th, we're at hearing number three. And our next hearing will be February 28th. Where, oh, that, that's the deadline for the public to submit their, their maps for their, in preparation for our final hearing, which is on March 14th. And hopefully at that particular date, the council will have reached a consensus as to what map they want, and then you can enact an ordinance or a resolution, however you choose to do it, and then you will, you will have new districts for the next 10 years. Next slide, please. This is a repeat from our previous hearings. These are the rules that we have to follow as we go along. And basically, we have to draw these districts with equal population. We have to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act. They have to be, to the extent possible, contiguous with each other. Have not divided neighborhoods that have been identified. And then use easily identifiable boundaries to the extent possible and to keep these districts compact. We cannot favor or discriminate against any political party. If you'll go to the next slide, please. There are 49,000 people here in series, so each district should have about 12,300 people in it. Next slide. And this is your current population. As you recall, at the last hearing. Is there some water that I could get? At the last hearing, we discussed that your hearing, your, your districts are basically compliant as they are currently drawn with equal population standards. And that standard is that your district should not be more than 10% total deviation away from one another. Your current total deviation is at 7.71. So if you didn't want to draw any new, if you, if you didn't want to make any changes to your districts, you had the discretion to do that. Next slide, please. This is the, a map of the, what's called C-VAP. That means Citizen Voting Age Population of the Latino population in, in series. And this was as of 2015, when we, when we were involved in drawing your, the current districts. So go to the next slide. You'll see that it's changed quite a bit. Your, your city has become, number one, more Latino. And more of those Latinos are, are citizens or perhaps citizens of voting age. And that means someone who is 18 years or older and a citizen of, of the, of the United States and therefore can be a voter in your, in your jurisdiction. But we may have to refer back to these, this map just to see how the districts affect some of these communities. And I just wanted to show you the changes that have, that have occurred within the last four years. It, when the, in the four years that the census has, has aggregated this survey that they take, which is called the American Community Survey, is where we get C-VAP numbers. Next slide. There are your current districts. We may be referring back to this. And we also have an interactive tool that we can use on your website that, that we can bring up here in the chamber. And hopefully, if we need to look at districts in more specifically, we can do that. But here's a map of your current, current lines. Next slide. This is the first draft map, draft map that I, I've put together. And it, it, we make very, very small changes to your districts. Basically, what I did is I said, these districts are pretty perfect population-wise to start with. So I just made them a little more perfect. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that the total deviation for this, this first draft that I've drawn is 3.47%, whereas your current districts are about 7.71%. So I just made your, your current districts a little more perfect. If you go backwards to the, the map again, there you go. The changes I made are, are very slight. If you, if you go to District 2, you'll see that little blue item at the top. That's the change that I made to District 2. If you go to District 1, you'll see this, just the tiny change I made to District 1 is I just moved it over to the right a little bit. And, and District 4, I believe I made a change at, at the southwest. No, that's the same. And then District 3, I believe I also kept basically the same. Actually, District 3 comes down into that area that was annexed by the city. There's actually only 33 people there, so it's not a big change. Next slide, please. So this is another map that I put together for you as a possibility of a, a, a new draft map. Starting with District 2, on the west side of 99, I just moved it just slightly south, just a little bit. And then District 4, I moved in a slightly northwestern, westerly direction into an area that, that has a Latino concentration in it. Then District 1 and 3, I believe I just straightened the line. That Moffett Road. Well, that's, oh, I, I remember, go back to the, my draft map. Yeah, I, at the bottom of District 1, I made, I, I just dipped it a little south. Then at, at the bottom of District 2, on the west side, as, as I described, I just moved it south a, a block and took in about five new blocks. So these are not major changes to your current districts that I put in, in these draft maps. And if we need to look at these in detail, we could, we could look at them on, on, on an interactive tool that's on your website. So I haven't made many major changes to your districts. And the reason I didn't do that is because they don't need to be made, made any major changes. So I, I kept it to a minimum. If you go to the next slide, you'll see in this particular draft, the, the deviation is even smaller at 2.3%. And again, you don't. I didn't need to make that many changes in a city of this size because the difference between 7% and 2% is frankly not that much. So that's what I put together for you. You go to the next slide. This is the tool that we offered to the public. If they wanted to draw maps, no one has taken advantage of this particular opportunity to, to go on the Dave's redistricting website and, and draw a map of their own using their home computer. But I believe we did receive a paper map today. If I go to the next slide is. If, if, if a member of, of your community has their own mapping software at home, this is how they can submit a new map to us if they so choose. And it's using a RTIS file or some geographic file. And they can just send it to the city and we will, will consider it here. Next slide. Well, that's the end of my presentation. Again, I've only tried to make slight changes to your districts so that you're, you're more in compliance with the equal population than, than currently. And as I said, your current districts are compliant and you can, you can adopt them as, if that's what you so choose. And I will make the statement because we're trying to follow the Federal Voting Rights Act, that no major changes were made to any district in regards to its Latino population. So that's an important consideration, considering the Latino population that we have here in series. So I will, I'm open for questions. Again, we'd like to hear from the, from the council and the public what they think of this particular project. And then the, the council needs to tell me what they think, if they think that, that, that there's an acceptable alternative here or they need to make some changes or whatever, and we'll prepare that for the next meeting.
Oh, I do have one question, just for clarification. So people that are involved in this for their very first time for redistricting and making districts, can you please tell me how it is determined that what the Hispanic voting is? How they determine whether it's an Hispanic voter or a Caucasian voter?
The census asks people for their ethnicity. But this, this, as far as voting age and figuring out whether they're citizens or not, that's done by the American Community Survey, which is something that's, the census does separately from its census. Remember, they did not ask the citizenship question on the census. It's done separately from the census where they try to determine where, whether people who are here are citizens or not, and then they have that information. They have it on the block. They don't have it on the block level. They have it at the block group level. And we have, we disaggregate it into block level data.
How do you decide that?
We use the, what the, what the census provides as far as the total number of people that, let me go backwards. The American Community Survey is a very large survey that the census takes over a series of four years. And they, they release, they release it every four years. 15, 19 was the last, was the last release. And it's based on a very large survey of people that the census take. It's not an, it's not a census where they try to determine in each household where, how many people are there. It's a survey where they, even though it's a very huge survey of a number of people, so they can try to figure out what the demographic trends are in, in the country as a whole. And we use that data to, to come up with our citizen voting age data. As, as does the, the state database, which is, which is, we, we work with. And they use it for statewide redistricting as well.
Thank you.
So you, you said that we're going to, or you wanted us to discuss if we wanted any changes made. We all received another map that wasn't shown on there. Is that included or not?
Well, we received a map today. I, I believe what we'll do is we, we can post it to the website and, because it hasn't been posted for the last seven days. And we can consider it more thoroughly at the next meeting. But this was just submitted, I believe, today. I did not see it until this afternoon. So I really haven't had a, a good chance to look at it. It, it does seem to make a, a change to District 2, whereas District 2 no longer goes across the freeway.
So we, we really can't give you a specific way that we want to go if we, if you haven't had a chance to look at this and tell us if it meets the parameter?
You're correct. I really haven't had a chance to look at this. And there's no, there's some population numbers on it. I would have to go and calculate to see how, whether that matches equal population. I believe it does. But again, I, I've just looked, just received this, this afternoon. Haven't had a real good chance to look at.
Okay, so I, I don't, I don't know that we can give you definitive if people can still, they can still submit their own maps, correct?
Yeah, since we have a hearing coming up, the next time we've established the deadline of, I believe it's the 28th, where people can submit their, I, I can, I can't, I can't keep dates straight in my head. We can go back to the slide and look to see what, what the deadlines are and then when the next meeting is. February 20, 28th is deadline for next maps. And then the March 14th is the deadline for the next, is the next hearing.
So between tonight and the 28th, people can still submit their map and then they will be brought to the council at the meeting of the 14th.
The reason we, we established the 28th is because it's a good two weeks before the final hitter hearing. And we can post the, the maps required seven days prior to the hearing.
Well, I'd like to make a comment that I guess part of me is a little bit disappointed because I thought tonight's meeting was going to be an interactive meeting where people can get, you know, where you're, you would have your laptop up, you can make adjustments, and you can see instantly what their, what the results are. I mean, that was my interpretation of tonight's meeting with it open to the public. And this was the only thing that was on the agenda for the city council. You know, I thought it was going to be an inter, interacted, you know, council meeting so people can submit their, their, their maps and show you, so you can do it instantaneously right now. I know that, what was it, five years ago? That we did have a meeting like that where it was be able to populate it then? Have you had one of those meetings?
I, I have had those meetings with, with other cities and, and county. I have the equipment with me if you wanted to set up and do that. But it, it's entirely up to, up, up to you, up to you. Because at this point, we can look at the draft maps that I've just submitted. What, what has come up on your screen right now is what I call the interactive tool. It's on your website at, at your city, and it'll show you the difference in your current districts and the draft maps that I've just presented. Or if you wanted to draw districts, we can draw this. But you haven't opened your public hearing yet. To hear from the public to see if they have any comments.
Is there any other questions from the council? Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to step up?
Mayor, we have one yellow card. The yellow card is from Jasmine. Is it Kuar?
Yeah, please have her step up to the podium. And someone could start the timer.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jasmine Kaur. And I have been a resident in the city of Series for 10 plus years now. I have been an active member in, member in Series since 2012 with my involvement in Series Youth Commission. Since then, I have been working closely with the Punjabi Sikh community for a few years now. As a member of the public, the redistricting process is a crucial, is crucial for the accurate representation of so many communities, especially communities of color. And such also my community, the Punjabi Sikh community. In the redistricting process, one of the key factors is keeping communities of interest intact. A community of interest can be defined in many ways, but it is important to consult the community to get an understanding of what they consider to be their community of interest. I would like to say that I support a proposed NDC 101 map drafted by NDC because it keeps the Punjabi Sikh communities of interest together. Our community falls within districts 2 and 3 in the NDC 101 map in which this community is kept whole. On my behalf of the Punjabi Sikh community, we hope that you will take our concerns into consideration and help to accommodate these concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Is there any other members of the public that would like to speak at this time?
John Osgood, Series, California. First, I don't know what we've, paying National Demographic Corporation to come up with maps. One thing we have heard in previous hearings on this issue is citizens of Series would like to see a district contiguous on one side of the highway. Maps represented this evening, don't do that. I understand we all have until the 28th to submit maps. I've held off for reasons where I took a step back. My maps will be coming before the 28th, and they will include a contiguous district on one side of the highway. The maps I see, in my opinion, favor incumbency. And that's one thing state law does not require us to do. So I'd like to keep that in consideration when you're looking at your maps and re-drawing line, if we could, please. Thank you. That's it.
Is there anybody else?
Mayor, may I say something?
Yeah, go ahead. Absolutely.
Um, Mr. Osgood, did you see the latest map that they put up that was submitted today? That basically put District 2 on the west side?
Yes, I saw that. I, I do have some disappointment, however, that National Demographic Corporation has been involved in every one of our redistricting committee or redistricting hearings, I'm sorry. And that was mentioned at the very first meeting. And tonight, when we come to the public meeting in this setting, just like Councilmember Klein, I was expecting it to be more of an interactive type situation. I think we really need that. I do appreciate the map that was submitted just today, but I think if we're hiring a company to do this, he should have came with multiple maps at this point in the process.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the chambers that would like to speak?
Yes, Paula Redfern, City of Series. So I'm looking at, I guess it's the map that was just proposed this week. I am in the current District 2. And this is the closest map I've seen that actually represents District 2. And the way the city is divided as opposed to how it currently is, which basically was designed around candidates or current council members at the time. So I'd like you guys and the consultant to take a good look at that new map. I'm guessing that the little bit of core on the west side of the freeway is probably because of the numbers. Other than that, it looks great.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, and we already received the one map, so there's no other emails?
No, Mayor.
Okay, bringing it back to council, is there any additional questions?
I, I would like to make a comment, Mayor.
Absolutely.
That, you know, here, here it is with, with District 4. District 4 is going to be up for reelection this year for a two-year term. Okay? Also, District 2 will be up for reelection. So, you know, if we decide to, as a council, to integrate the west, the east side of the freeway into District 4 and make District 2 the west side of the freeway, with it being election year and a two-year term, you know, the city council can determine that, you know, the new redistrict of number 4 would be a two-year term and District 2 would be a two-year term, even though Councilmember Rhino and myself would, would ultimately be running against each other if we so desire to run. But we would get the representation on the west side of the freeway that we have tried to get five years ago and that should be done at this time with the opportunity with two council members being, lack of a better word, up for election. So I would like to be, I would like that to be under consideration. I know that we don't have to do that, but that would not affect Districts 1 or 3. So at this time, I would, I would welcome the opportunity to combine the east side and make the west side one district by itself.
And I would agree with Councilmember Klein. I know when this first came up, redistricting, both he and I voted against what was adopted. And I believe, I can't speak for him, but I can speak for myself, that I never believed in making a boundary because of an existing council member. I don't think that's right. I think people still have a right to vote for who they want to, but to make your boundary because of sitting council members isn't correct. And I too believe if we can't get all of the west side in District 2, and if it turns out that this little cutout of 4 has to be on the west side because of numbers, I still think the west side is getting the, the representation that they speak often about, that they feel all of the council members, including the mayor, are all on the east side and that they feel that they're left out. all of the council members, including the mayor, are all on the east side and that they feel that they're left out. So I would hope that we can look at those numbers before we make a decision.
Thank you, council.
With your input tonight, uh, Mr. Yocum, that'll be the first task on his list will be to, excuse me, he can't hear me, will be to look at this map.
Yeah, I could, I could turn it into a a draft map like the, uh, just like the ones you saw today, and I can, I can certainly present, bring that back and present it at the next meeting.
As far as the setting up your tools so people could draw their own maps, are you able to do that tonight or not? Is that a lengthy process? Because I I was here also when Councilmember Klein spoke and we did have that one workshop and a lot of people showed up for it where people could kind of draw up their map and and go right up and they'd say, yeah, this would work or not. And so I think it cuts down a lot on, you know, the waiting time for people to see if it's acceptable or not.
It it's up to you. Uh, if if you would like to recess and set up my computer and set up a system, I think we might be able to do that. Or I could, we could wait till the next meeting to do that. Uh, it's it's in, it's entirely at your discretion.
Sorry, go ahead.
Maybe we can see if there's anybody who wants to do that.
Okay.
Before the setup, I I'm not sure what Zoom looks like tonight and participate.
I I want, what I wanted to chime in on, uh, council, is that if, um, both both Klein and Ms. Rhino are interested to see how the map would look based on your guys' request. Uh, I think it it might be a good idea if he, he does go ahead and bring that map to our next meeting, so then we can better be prepared and do an interactive map then. And maybe try to get some more public input and maybe some more people down here to take a look at that. I don't know how you guys feel about that, council.
Well, I I think the city attorney brought up a good point that we could have the consultant set up all of his equipment, but is there anybody in the audience that would want to utilize that tonight or not? I think that's really, I agree with the city attorney. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to do that?
Well, and I will make a comment that I will not be here for the February twenty eighth meeting. I will be on a vacation.
February twenty, I thought was just a, was not a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So I guess there's no, no one in the audience, doesn't look like it. Maybe Mr. Osgood, are you interested or not?
Maybe he needs more time. I'm sure that everybody wants to submit a map. Might need a little bit more time to prepare. That might be the case.
Ms. Redfern, did you want to utilize that program tonight or not?
I have a suggestion and 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 you can uh, say yes or no. I, if there is anybody here that needs assistance, uh, with the with the redistricting uh, application that we've placed on your website so they can draw their own own maps, I'd be happy to to do a session. Uh, just instructing you how to do that. It is pretty simple. Uh, I'd be happy to do that. Or, uh, I I you can, you can set me up here. I have, I have to get into your network. If that's a possibility.
The council, what I was, what I was suggesting that I almost feel like even the public wasn't prepared for us to to do something like this virtual, and I think that if we make it so that when, um, firm comes back next time and he'd be uh, prepared to do that, we can have a better opportunity to to look at those maps virtually. I think that'd be very important, council.
And Mayor and Council, if I could, just a clarification on the dates. The the February twenty eighth day is the last, is the deadline for the public to submit the draft map. And then our last public hearing will be March fourteenth.
March fourteenth, yes.
Counsel, uh, go ahead.
The Mr. Mayor, this, this is Alex. And I'll just just toss it out and maybe the city attorney could chime in as well. You know, we might, you know, more publicize that that March fourteenth could be more of an interactive workshop. Um, and if we pub- publicized it that way, we might have more folks uh, show up for that meeting, um, and participate in that way. So, um, it's just, just an idea.
Oh. And we could do that, if I could real quick.
Sure.
We could do that, but we won't be creating any new maps.
That's what I was just gonna say. So we could do that on the fourteenth, but it would be, it would be mute boot because the February twenty eighth is the deadline for the the map. So maybe the suggestion that was made that rather than have him set up all of his equipment, take a recess and have him do that, that he hang around and if somebody in the audience needs a quick tutorial on how to do their own map, that he would be available for that. I don't know what the rest of the council feels.
If it, if, uh, the firm is okay with helping some folks out, um, that I don't see that as a problem, but
Happy to do that. I would be happy.
As far as today's meeting, I think that we can possibly move on to the next one.
Well, Mr. Osgood standing up, I think he has something to say.
I was going to suggest if he would assist people this evening, we have a couple options on this. Uh, most of you are aware, representation and redistricting is important topic to my, myself. So if if the gentleman would stay and help those people as he's indicated he will, that's acceptable. One other option we have, we are required to have four meetings. Nothing says we can't have five. If there, if there is a desire on the council's part to have a, an interactive meeting, which I I get the impression that there is. Mr. Klein would like that. I'd like that for the public. We always could come to a consensus as a council and add a fifth meeting, could we not, Mr. Helenin?
Yes.
Thank you. That, that my only comment. Thank you for for the time.
Thank you. So for the members.
There's no one else if you want to speak.
No, yeah, I was just about to say something. Um, so so members of the public, if you want to take advantage of of being assisted in in making you in that map, uh, feel free to stick around. And council members, is there any other questions or comments?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll go ahead and and give direction that we'll reconvene at the next meeting. Which is what date? I'm sorry, March, what date is that?
March fourteenth.
March fourteenth and.
And in the meantime, I will make the map that was submitted today into a draft map for consideration at that meeting.
That'd be great. I really do appreciate that. Thank you. And just real quick, so for example, on the next meeting, as all the maps were submitted, we're allowed to make some decisions that day, correct? If we need to move some lines, want to re- reiterate on that?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. All right, council, if there's any more questions or comments?
I I do, I just, I want to be sure that I understand that the final maps have to be submitted February twenty eighth, the draft maps. Then on March fourteenth, we have our public hearing to discuss them. And at that meeting, the council can make tweaks more or not?
Yes, I believe so, correct?
Yes, you can. And then then if, then you'd have to schedule another meeting to adopt the final map.
Be- because we have to have it adopted in April, is that correct? By April, something?
April seventeenth is the deadline for cities in California to have their maps adopted and done.
So it really behooves us to have what we believe to be potentially, um, some, some good choices.
Yes.
The the fourteenth and not to come to that meeting expecting to make changes. That be correct?
Yeah, because here's my plan, and tell me if I'm wrong. Uh, the two draft maps that I've I've just presented will stay on your website for for observation and for comment. Uh, this will become a new draft map. And if on the fourteenth, you decide that this is the map you want to adopt, you can do that and then you're done. Or if there's any other maps brought forward by the public uh, or any other draft maps that I should come up with that are posted seven days prior to the fourth, meeting on the fourteenth. Those can be adopted as your final map, as long as they've been posted for seven days.
Okay, so if they meet the the deadline of February twenty eighth and it gets to you, then you're going to run all the numbers and make sure that it's something that could be posted to our site that it's, it's allowable, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
And once we are at that meeting and we, maybe the council has some suggestions, we can make some small alterations, correct? Because eventually we're going to have to vote on accepting that map.
You could, and then you would have to come back so Mr. Yocum can run through the numbers to make sure it's compliant.
Correct, correct.
Right.
Okay, no, that that sounds good.
Vice Mayor Silveira has a hand raised.
Go ahead.
Vice Mayor Silveira, your hand is raised. We're not sure if you have a question or a comment.
Yeah, I've actually been talking. I guess nobody could hear me. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I apologize. I'm driving. I pulled over. I was prepared to make a motion again to to stay, to keep the current districts the way they are written as I moved last time, um, but with Councilmember Klein and Rhino feeling so strongly about the changes more aligned with what we received today. Then I I think that that behooves us to put that off until that map can be drawn for the public to see also. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's any more, no more comments from the public, we'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Public hearing and if that, if there's any more questions other than that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.